The City of Andalia City Council Meeting for January the 17th, 2017 has now come to order. The first part of our agenda is a moment of reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you've had the opportunity to review the council study session minutes of January the 3rd, 2017, and also the council meeting minutes of January the 3rd, 2017. Are there any corrections or revisions to those? If not, they'll stand approved. This evening, we do have a proclamation, a very important one, and that's for the 40th anniversary of the Historical Society of Andalia Butler. And I know that we have a number of people here. And where's... Is it down there? Oh.
I heard that some of you didn't know why you were here. I heard that some of you thought you were here because of Bee City. We're all because they've become a bee city and we're the first bee city in Congress State of Ohio, which is important.
Oh, yeah. Great recognition.
Come on down.
I remember something about Bee City in my life.
Come on down.
Huh?
You're the chairman.
All right. We've got a move for law.
I really knew it wasn't the Bee City. I really knew it wasn't the Bee City.
Did you really? Okay. Hi, y'all. Is this a good one, Darrell, or... Sure, sure, we can get it after the meeting. I do have a proclamation here for this event. Whereas the City of Andalia wishes to recognize those citizens and organizations whose service to others is significant, and whereas the people of Andalia take justifiable pride in honoring, preserving, and recognizing the rich cultural heritage of Andalia, and whereas the bicentennial celebration in 1976 sparked interest in the creation of a local historical society for Andalia and Butler Township. And whereas, the Historical Society of Andalia Butler was established on January the 24th, 1977, as a nonprofit corporation dedicated to preserving the history of Andalia and Butler Township. And whereas, the society's purpose and mission is to collect, preserve, and interpret materials of historic significance and to provide for dissemination of information of such materials and encourage historical inquiry in these areas. And whereas, the Historical Society of Andalia Butler has continued to develop and improve the historical society grounds on East Alkaline Springs Road. And whereas, the Historical Society of Andalia Butler has been an integral member of the Andalia community for 40 years, providing valuable educational resources while maintaining an archive of photographs and artifacts chronologizing the history of the creation and development and growth of our community. Now therefore I, Arlene Setzer, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Andalia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January the 24th, 2017, as Historical Society of Andalia Butler Day. In the City of Andalia, and call upon all of our citizens to recognize and celebrate the organization's 40 years of dedicated service to our city. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene.
Thank you. citizens.
Thank you.
And if there's anyone in our audience who would like to make a comment to Counsel, would
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
The society thanks you.
Joe, if you want to say something else?
We thank you.
you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your
Of course.
Come up to the mic.
Joe Dranchak, 1328 Corner Strip.
statement?
We thank Arlene for doing this.
Holly Wiggins, 660 Castle Creek.
We thank Missy for working with us to get the information together. Next week, we have a carry-in dinner next Tuesday, and you're all invited.
Just calling to remind the city that today, Tuesday, was the day that applications for the Gift of Power program began.
And the March the 21st, we have a celebration that we'll be doing at the Senior Center
So if you know there are some citizens in the community, or friends, or others that you may know that have some trouble with paying their heating bills, have them contact
as a catered event.
Salvation Army.
So there'll be more information about that.
They are starting... There are requirements that you have to qualify for, and have used most of your other assistance
But thank you very, very much for this.
Thank you. We need to turn around. We need to get a group picture here.
up, but it is up and available.
Well, we'll get it after...
And we are also still taking donations.
Will you get it now, or...
I might get it now.
They're a little bit low this year, and we want to still try and help at least 600 families
Yeah, she's got it now.
All right. Here.
It didn't have to be up here.
Yep.
Everybody in?
again this year.
All right.
So keep that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody interested in finding more information out, you can visit our website, dpandl.com/gift. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make comment? Seeing none, we'll go to the City Manager's Report. However, we have no information items, nor do we have any action items, nor do we have any old business. And that brings us to our first resolution of the evening, and that's Resolution 17-R-04. By title only, please.
Yes, ma'am. 17-R-04. A resolution authorizing the purchase of a Toro Grounds Master 4000D requested by the Parks and Recreation Department from Century Equipment of Cincinnati at the State of Ohio contract bid price of $57,718.81, and requesting Counsel declare the current 2005 Toro Rough mower 4000D being replaced as surplus property.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this resolution would authorize the purchase of the Toro Grounds Master Rough mower for Castle Hills Golf Course. The budget for this item was $62,000. The Grounds Master is a rough mower that has three decks that form to the contour of the terrain. The unit also includes a leaf mulching kit with features that our current mower does not have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-04.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayler, second by Councilman Herbst, so we do approve Resolution 17-R-04 as presented. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilman Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fairst.
Yes.
Councilman Herbst.
Yes.
Councilman Ayler.
Yes.
Councilman Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Resolution 17-R-05. Title only, please.
Certainly. 17-R-05. A resolution authorizing the purchase of a Toro Grounds Master 3500D requested by the Parks and Recreation Department from Century Equipment of Hamilton at the State of Ohio contract bid price of $31,209.53, and requesting Counsel declare the current 2005 Toro Sidewinder 3500D being replaced as surplus property.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So $34,000 is budgeted for the replacement of a trim mower at Castle Hills Golf Course. These mowers are specialty mowers. They're used four to five days per week to mow the green banks, the T-banks, and our par three rough, as well as medians and the clubhouse grounds. They're designed to follow the contours of the terrain, so there isn't any scalping of the turf.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-05. As read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Fairst, second by Vice Mayor Lewis, so we do approve Resolution 17-R-05 as presented. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilman Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fairst.
Yes.
Councilman Herbst.
Yes.
Councilman Ayler.
Yes.
Councilman Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-05. Title only, please.
Certainly. 17-R-05. A resolution authorizing the purchase of a Toro Grounds Master 3500D requested by the Parks and Recreation Department from Century Equipment of Hamilton at the State of Ohio contract bid price of $31,209.53, and requesting Counsel declare the current 2005 Toro Sidewinder 3500D being replaced as surplus property.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So $34,000 is budgeted for the replacement of a trim mower at Castle Hills Golf Course. These mowers are specialty mowers. They're used four to five days per week to mow the green banks, the T-banks, and our par three rough, as well as medians and the clubhouse grounds. They're designed to follow the contours of the terrain, so there isn't any scalping of the turf.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-05. As read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fairst, second by Vice Mayor Lewis, so we do approve Resolution 17-R-05. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-06. By title only, please.
Yes, ma'am. 17-R-06. A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of support and software renewal for firewall and email filtering support requested by the IT Department to Cadre of Cincinnati in the amount of $10,306.96.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last year, the city transitioned to a FortNet for firewall and email filtering services. Each of those services included a one-year service and support. In order to continue our service and support and receive the latest virus and malware updates, and those support agreements need to be renewed, the budget for this renewal for one year is $12,300.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 17-R-06.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilwoman Fairst, so we do approve Resolution 17-R-06. Once again, is there any comment or question? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-07. By title only, please.
17-R-07. A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase for 10 mobile radios requested by the Division of Police from Motorola Solutions through P&amp;R Communications, Inc., in the amount of $42,447.70, and declaring the existing equipment being replaced as surplus property.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. $42,500 is budgeted for the replacement of portable radios in the police department. Motorola through P&amp;R is the sole source provider of radios that are utilized by our police department, and for eight mobile radios and two portable radios. The radios that we're replacing are seven and nine years old respectively. The current radios will no longer be supported by Motorola after 2019. Therefore, we are transitioning to newer radios over the next several years.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-07 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Herbst, second by Councilman Ayler, so we do approve Resolution 17-R-07 as presented. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-08. By title only, please.
Yes, ma'am. 17-R-09. A resolution awarding the bid for two police patrol vehicles requested by the Division of Police to Bowtownson Ford in the amount of $66,538 as the lowest and best bid, and declaring the existing two police patrol vehicles being replaced surplus property.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids for two new police patrol utility vehicles were opened on December 19th. Bid packets were hand-delivered to five local dealerships and mailed to seven others. Bowtownson Ford submitted the loan bid for a 2017 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Patrol Vehicle at a unit price of $33,269. The total cost for both units is below the 2017 budget amount of $70,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-08 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-08 as presented. Once again, is there any comment or question? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Resolution 17-R-12. By title only?
Yes, ma'am. 17-R-12. A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of a 2017 International 4300 LP Medic requested by the Fire Division to Horton Emergency Vehicles in the amount of $234,742.82, and declaring the existing 2008 Ford F-350 Medic as surplus property.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So the Division of Fire has received quotes through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program for the replacement of its 2008 Ford E-350 Medic. The 2017 budget for the replacement of this medic is $250,000. The department is looking to continue with the purchase of a heavy-duty medic unit in an effort to extend the life of the vehicle and reduce maintenance costs associated with the current fleet of medium-duty medics.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 17-R-12. As read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilwoman Fairst, so we do approve Resolution 17-R-12. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We now go to our ordinances and their first reading for this evening, and the first one is 17-01. By title?
17-01. An ordinance rezoning the property located at 9375 Dogleg Road from Highway Business HB to Industrial I, and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So a treasure chest storage at 9375 Dogleg Road is requesting to rezone approximately 4.565 acres from Highway Business to Industrial to allow for the future expansion of the existing self-storage facility. The existing facility was developed in 2008 and received conditional use approval at that time. However, a self-service storage facility was removed as a permitted use in the HB District shortly thereafter. Now, we have received a letter from our law director indicating that because the use was permitted as a conditional use when it was first developed, and that because of Andalia's enforcement of its zoning code could result in an unreasonable exercise of our police power, and because their request to expand their use was contemplated with the original approval, they showed the future expansion of this site when they received their original conditional use approval. He believes it would be unreasonable to have the owner go through these extra hoops to expand its use by adding to it, add additional use within the original area contemplated, and that such an expansion should be permitted as a continuation of the existing use rather than require them to go through a rezoning and potential conditional use in the future.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we deny ordinance 17-01 in its first reading. In light... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Fairst, so we deny ordinance 17-01 in its first reading. Comments?
I'll just add that to the letter by counsel, it basically obviates the need for us to change the zoning and enables the property owner to accomplish what they want to do.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion is denied 7-0. Ordinance 17-02.
17-02, I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's okay.
An ordinance approving a major amendment for a changeable copy wall sign for the property located at 229 East National Road and owned by Speedway LLC in the downtown business zoning district with a PUD overlay.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess Speedway is requesting a PUD major amendment to allow the installation of two wall signs on its existing canopy. Speedway's request is to place two 31-square-foot changeable copy signs on its existing canopy, one facing east and one sign facing west. The maximum square footage permitted is 70 square feet, so they are under that limitation. The city's sign code, however, does not permit changeable copy to be included on wall signs. Speedway's previous freestanding sign, which did include changeable copy, was damaged in an auto accident over the summer and had to be removed. Speedway is requesting approval of the changeable copy wall sign in lieu of erecting another freestanding sign.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we deny ordinance 17-02 in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, and second by Councilman Herbst, that we deny the ordinance 17-02 in its first reading. Any comments? Would you call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and to deny the ordinance passed by 7-0. We'll go to ordinance 17-03. By title only?
Yes, ma'am. 17-03. An ordinance approving a planned unit development, preliminary development plan for the Andalia Office Park for the property at 203 and 231 West National Road.
Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Yolo Development 1 has proposed a PUD preliminary plan for the former Morton Middle School site, which is owned by the City of Andalia. Development of this site is limited to the following uses: administrative, business or professional offices, professional services, daycare, retail, hotel, and multifamily. However, as we discussed during the approval of the plat at your last meeting, any multifamily retail or hotel combined shall be limited to approximately 30% of the acreage of the overall site. The proposal for the development in Office Park with six buildings in multiple phases, the first phase consists of three lots fronting on National Road for medical uses. The proposed parking for lots 1 and 2 does fall three spaces short of what is required by our zoning code. However, the total parking proposed for the entire development does meet our zoning code requirements. The Planet Commission did review this matter at its December 27th meeting and unanimously recommended approval, subject to three conditions: one, that the stormwater plan conformed to the city's standards and be approved by the city engineer; two, that any signage be reviewed at the time of final development plan; and three, that some new, a couple new sheets be submitted showing Phase 1 and Phase 2 square footage for building number 2, which is proposed to be constructed in phases.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 17-03 in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fairst, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve ordinance 17-03 in its first reading. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Setzer.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have no ordinances in their second reading, nor do we have any emergency ordinances, and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions with a variance request at 1020 West National Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bowtownson Ford Lincoln is proposing to replace its existing wall sign as part of a building expansion and renovation project. So four new wall signs are proposed to be installed that will encompass 135 square feet, where 150 square feet is the maximum permitted, so the new wall sign will be in compliance with our code.[1583.83] the ordinance seventeen zero two in its first reading. Any comments? Would you call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and to deny the ordinance passed by seven to zero. We'll go to ordinance seventeen zero three. By title only?
Yes, ma'am. Seventeen dash zero three. An ordinance approving a planned unit development, preliminary development plan for the Vandelia Office Park for the property at 203 and 231 West National Road.
Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Yolo Development One has proposed a PUD preliminary plan for the former Morton Middle School site, which is owned by the City of Vandelia. Development of this site is limited to the following uses: administrative, business, or professional offices, professional services, daycare, retail, hotel, and multifamily. However, as we discussed during the approval of the plat at your last meeting, any multifamily retail or hotel combined shall be limited to approximately 30% of the acreage of the overall site. The proposal for the development in Office Park with six buildings in multiple phases, the first phase consists of three lots fronting on National Road for medical uses. The proposed parking for lots one and two does fall three spaces short of what is required by our zoning code. However, the total parking proposed for the entire development does meet our zoning code requirements. The Planted Commission did review this matter at its December 27th meeting and unanimously recommended approval, subject to three conditions. One, that the stormwater plan conformed to the city's standards and be approved by the city engineer. Two, that any signage be reviewed at the time of final development plan. And three, that some new... A couple of new sheets be submitted showing Phase One and Phase Two square footage for Building Number Two, which is proposed to be constructed in phases.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance seventeen dash zero three in its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fars, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve ordinance seventeen dash zero three in its first reading. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no ordinances in their second reading, nor do we have any emergency ordinances, and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions with a variance request at 1020 West National Road. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bowtownson Ford Lincoln is proposing to replace its existing wall sign as part of a building expansion and renovation project. So four new wall signs are proposed to be installed that will encompass 135 square feet, where 150 square feet is the maximum permitted. So the new wall sign will be in compliance with our code. The current wall signage, again, exceeds 150 square feet and is therefore being brought into compliance. However, Bowtownson also has two non-conforming freestanding signs and also two non-conforming directional signs. And they exceed the maximum height and square footage requirements. The zoning code states that a non-conforming sign shall immediately lose its non-conforming designation and must be brought into compliance or removed if a permit is issued for any additional sign on the lot that contains the non-conforming sign. Again, therefore, a variance is being requested to allow the continuation of the non-conforming signs so that the wall sign can be replaced and brought into compliance with the zoning code. The BZA did review this variance request at its December 14th meeting and voted four zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the variance request on 1020 West National Road for the installation of four new wall signs without bringing the non-conforming freestanding signs into compliance.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we approve the variance request at 1020 West National Road. Comments?
I'm going to change my position on this principally because of the discussion we had at the workshop. I still feel strongly that we need to try to bring signs into compliance when we're doing remodeling. I think Mr. Ayers made some cogent remarks as it related to those particular signs, and I do think, since we have it in the works, to work to change the code as it relates to that particular area and that particular signage, then it'll work much better, and we have, while it's, I'm sure, not binding, but we have the commitment from the principal there, Bowtownson, Mr. Taylor, and I know him to be a man of his word, that if and when we change that code, he'll bring those signs into compliance, and I think that's a more than fair agreement given the circumstances, and thus I will be supporting the motion.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars. Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We also have a variance request at 270 North Dixie Drive. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. VNA Dayton is requesting a variance from the city's off-street parking requirements to allow the establishment of a martial arts karate studio in a retail strip center at 270 North Dixie Drive. The property in question is a 12,000-square-foot building with 19 off-street parking spaces. The 4,000 square feet that is proposed to be leased for the martial arts karate studio would be classified as personal service use and by itself would require 20 parking spaces, just again, just for that use. The applicant has reached an agreement with an adjoining property under the Masonic Temple that would make 61 parking spaces available, including their existing parking. The Masonic Temple parking lot will be sealed and striped as part of this project. The Masonic Temple indicates that their parking lot is not used until after 6:00 PM and rarely has more than 10 vehicles. The BZA reviewed this variance request at its December 28th meeting and voted four zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the variance at 270 North Dixie Drive for off-street parking.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve the variance request at 270 North Dixie Drive. Comments? I'd just like to say that I think that this is a very good way for us to be utilizing parking areas that are not commonly used during hours that other people can use them, so... Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Councilmembers, you have the Civil Service Meeting Draft Minutes of January the 10th, 2017. Any comments? You also have the Planning Commission Minutes of December the 27th. Any comments? And we have a bill listing for December 2016 in the amount of $3,883,266.84. And that brings us to council comments. Mr. Schaefer?
No comments, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
And Councilman Blakesley?
First of all, congratulations to the Historical Society for their fortieth. It's quite a birthday there, and also for their passion and vigilance for the preservation of Vandelia's history. And I think it's so important to maintain our identity through the history, and again, appreciate that and keeping those 40 years, and hopefully you continue 40 more years and beyond, so, for all to enjoy. Also, I know maybe stealing some of the thunder of others, but at least two others had the opportunity to attend the mayors and managers' meeting, and it was very interesting to see some of the other cities that are experiencing some of the same woes that we have, but I also am proud in the fact that we actually are doing better than some other cities, and very proud of that. But legislatively, across the state, we all are in this together, and so I think there's many issues facing all of us that we pull together as a team and let our legislators know some of the things coming down the road. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fars?
I just want to say happy birthday to the Historical Society. They... If you've not been around them and seen how much they work on that property and how devoted they are to those buildings and those grounds, take an opportunity and stop in. They have open hours a lot of times on the weekends, and if you... Even if you just drive by, you see people out there working, and it's such a positive for our community, and just really appreciate all the stuff, all the work that you guys do. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Herbst?
I'd also like to congratulate the Historical Society. It is a very strong asset that this community has, and like Councilwoman Fars mentioned, that if you haven't been there, I would encourage everyone to visit the property. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Ayers?
Just a quick comment. I had a gentleman approach me this morning and wanted to thank council and mayor for making changes out at the rec center. We did some scheduling changes as well as some small fee changes, and commented to him that we just did the approval. All the work was done by Elaine and Jeff and Steve Clark, so thank you to them. I think it's about the third or fourth time that I've had citizens approach me and really appreciate the changes made out there, so done well. Thank you.
Is that regarding the gym use policy?
Yes.
Good. Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
No comments tonight.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
I would only add to Mr. Ayers' comments that I'd like to acknowledge Parks and Rec Board that reviews those changes, and they... Certainly, Mr. Clark creates the policy, but they bounce it off the Parks and Rec Board, and they get the feeling of the community in that respect, and acknowledge those people that work hard on trying to formulate that.